So was that working then?
We're taped.
We are recording.
It's taped up from the election.
Oh, good.
I know because I voted right there and I was like, why did they tape it?
There you go.
Ew. Matt saved the day.
He, okay. Now that we have, um.
I start with.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Paul Paul. Um, Mr. Mersinsky, we've heard from, he's in Florida and he sent us a, a nice note with some of his opinions on things we might be looking at tonight. Um, Mr. Hope.
Listen.
Mr. Merlington. Ms. Abralski.
Yeah.
Exon.
Here.
Mrs. Powell.
Here.
And Conley's here. Um, of course, we have, um, uh, city manager and the city planner here and we have unfortunately our, um, city clerk is out sick, but we have April subbing in tonight. Thank you. And, um, a, we need to look at the minutes from the regular meeting of October first and see if we can approve those.
Your motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
Any issues with those before we approve them? All, okay, with all in favor of approving, uh, the minutes of October first, uh, please say it by with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, we have approved minutes. How about tonight's agenda? That's item five. Does that look reasonable and ready to go here, everybody?
Looked good to me. I'll make a motion to approve the, for tonight's meeting.
Any comments, discussion? All in favor of tonight's agenda, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to public comments. I don't see anyone in the audience tonight. And is there anyone on Zoom waiting for us? Um, hearing and seeing, well, noticing no public to comment, uh, we'll move on to, uh, conflicts of interest and ex parte communication. Does anyone on the commission have to report anything of that nature?
Not I.
There, item eight. This is the best part, by the way, of the meeting. It goes so, so quickly. Uh, there's no scheduled public hearings. There's no site plan reviews under item nine. So other business, all the way to 10. Uh, master plan results in discussion at item A tonight, and I'm not sure what will, how we're handling that. So I'm going to leave that up to our capable professionals up here to tell us what we're doing next.
This meeting, we kind of ran through the results from the survey. Um, that was one where we sort of provided you the document with results at the meeting and kind of walked through a bunch of questions, um, that meeting you had asked for amongst the kind of go through the graphs and the results and the comments and kind of die- digest everything and then come back to this meeting with um, observations, questions, comments, and really I think what, um, I would like to do in addition to that is get your feedback from, um, you know, I guess in terms of um, some sort of policy objectives and stuff like this on work on. So when we put together a master plan, um, we presented a couple of months ago about a sort of research that we had done on demographics and housing, population change, um, and all that kind of stuff. Uh, we do that work. We do the public engagement work and those two things really informed the direction that the city wants to go and you guys as planning commissioners want to go in terms of policy. So, um, I guess the, the first question would be if you guys have any additional questions or observations or analysis that you would like us to do on the survey data. Um, and then secondary to that would be, um, um, initial and this, it does, you don't have to be very polished and sort of refined thoughts at this point, but some initial thoughts and opinions with respect to, um, policies. So, so goals in terms of things that we should be working on that needs to sort of reflect what the public has said they want. So some of the concerns included, you know, traffic, groundwater, housing, um, a lot of those kinds of comments. So our job is to sort of take those comments and turn it into some kind of policy direction and sort of topic areas that you think we need to focus over the next month can come up with some of the specifics in terms of what, what the words need to be and how they need to be written and stated. Um, but, uh, you know, we're kind of looking to you guys for direction in terms of this guidance and the, and sort of the key topic areas and key priorities. Take away from this as things.
I don't know. Anyone, I'm on page twenty-three where there's a synopsis of some of the major issues and listed with who's very concerned, who are somewhat concerned, things like that. It's thing to work off of it to keep it, um.
Is there a question number?
It's question number fifteen, fourteen, I believe. Question fourteen?
Or then I'm open to that too. I just ran across this and it seemed, uh, keep some of the major issues in a, in a, in a easy to read format. Um, was anyone able to get a through line like independently when you're looking at this as like clear direction from the citizens as to what they wanted? But I have to admit it was difficult for me.
From what I saw, most, most of the comments were about the water and the cost of the water, the, um, the quality of the water and the streets. There was, that was two of the main issues. Uh, was the, the biggest ones, um, and because they say, you know, with the quality of the water, you know, why am I paying this much? The quality is not so great. And then the streets, you know? You know, I, I kept seeing like, well, great job fixing the ones you did, but there's more than a dozen more. So that's where it seemed to be.
Start with the groundwater thing. Like what? When people talk about quality of groundwater, we, we aren't seeing anything from the water treatment plant that suggests that there's, that anything is wrong with the water. Um, other than I'm guessing the line is the big question, the big issue that people have.
What I hear occasionally, the, we get brown water calls. Why is my water brown? Well, that happens. We have a lot of development going on, a lot in the Pine subdivision that we were just talking about. So anytime you add a section of water main, you're, you're stirring that wat-, you're stirring the water up in that line in that neighborhood. We can't. That's, that's a fact of growing, you know, expanding our water system. Um, we're going to get the same thing as soon as the apartment complex starts out in the HC district.
You used to faucet yesterday. You get the same thing internally in your house when it hap-, when you do something like that.
Well, when we loop the water main down Pine Street and then White Creek and connect it, we may be changing the direction of water flow to some sections of town. That's going to stir up settled water. It's going to be brown for a while. Let it run and it'll clear up.
So basically this is common to any municipal water system.
So I read this as, is this a perception or is this a reality? And I was feeling like this is more maybe a perception thing. Obviously we had the arsenic thing earlier this year. And, uh, this, I wonder if people just saw that and thought, oh my God, or my water's terrible, or it's flint all over again, right? So I s-, I, I thought about that when I was looking at this because I know when I got mine, I was like, oh God. And then I looked at it, I was like, oh, I don't need to worry, right? It's well within acceptable range. You guys are just doing due diligence of letting us know that it was higher than normal, right? But well within safety parameters. That's why I wonder if we really have a perception thing rather than an actual thing. Yeah. And you're right. If you, if you mess with your pipes in your house, you're going to get a little brown water coming out. Yeah. Every time I replaced a faucet or something, it's always, yeah.
And well, they were, they were commenting on the hard water that we have, which is not just us that have that, you know, uh, Sparta has that, you know, and other communities have the hard water that comes out. It is, you know, it's, it's just a fact. Um.
For that we're taking the water from.
Yes, that was. And this is not terrible. I mean, I get a little bit of like lime buildup on my like, my, you know, I'm a refrigerator, but as long as I change my filters, I know it's, it's.
It is terrible, but not everybody's got a filtered fridge, you know, right?
Yeah. And it, it is what it is. We sit on a giant limestone aquifer. So unless we, there's not much we can do about that. And believe me, I've lived in other municipalities where the water was nowhere near as good as this water is.
Well, for trade water, it's not bad. Yeah. And I was a city, I was a country kid, so I grew with that well water and like moving into the city with, you know, a little bit more chemicals always, ugh, to me. And I didn't think ours was that bad.
Tonight's council meeting at the request of the mayor, Bill Oros, our public works director, at the beginning of the meeting is going to do a little presentation on our water system, the new well coming online, growing pains, you know, you're good. If you have brown water, please call us. Um, we've had a couple of instances where, uh, construction companies come to town, they hook up to a hydrant without calling us. They're stirring up the system. We're going to get brown water calls. If a couple of people call us, we can go to that location and say, "Construction company, what are you doing?" And then we can charge them and, you know, take appropriate action. Um, but instead people go to Facebook and say, "My water's awful. My water's brown, blah, blah, blah." Call us. They, we, we, we can't be in all sections of the town every day looking for, you know, people hooking up to hydrants or whatever. So just a quick presentation, a little bit of education. So hopefully that will.
Does the city have a way for people to report water issues like quickly? Just call. I don't know if there was an online reporting thing because a little bit more modern. People are tend to gripe online obviously rather than face to face. So.
On the website, you can write and send a note into City Hall. I've used that occasionally.
So I, I sense already and I started it, so it's partly my fault. It's going to be really easy to, for us to go and, um, like discuss the issue of the day as we move through this. Um, how can we address or not address this within a potential new master plan?
Well, I think, um, you know, a lot of master plans that we put together have the, this one or more goals and objectives that deal with infrastructure. So the two issues we've identified so far and you briefly touched on water and streets are, are in, are infrastructure type, type concerns, right? So, um, we could write, uh, for example, goals that talk about maintaining the quality of the water system, maintaining high quality water. Um, maybe underneath that as objectives, we talk about if it is a perception issue, which I think I agree it probably is. I'm also partially informed by, you know, PFAS and some of those concerns that tend to bubble up in North Kent County generally and now kind of all over the country. Um, so we've seen water, groundwater as a concern in a lot of different communities, even when everyone's on public water and they're not, it's not just a bunch of people with it as well as it still is, oh my gosh, the groundwater is a concern, even, even if they're not directly drawing from it, if they're drawing water from a river or something, sometimes there's still concern about, like people just don't like the idea of contaminants or, or, or pollutants filtering down into the groundwater system because you know, I mean, that's, it moves, it drifts, it's eventually going to affect people that aren't on the public water system. So, um, I think we can address those with goal statements that would talk about water system, quality of public streets, public sewer service, um, the need to kind of maintain and sort of keep on top of improvements and modernizations to make sure that we're, you know, keeping the most efficiently run system that we can. So there are things like that that, that we can write about. Um, and that's kind of what we, what we had, we had an, an anticipated doing. And most of our plans have some kind of a infrastructure discussion in the goals as kind of a policy statement. A lot of it isn't going to be something that you, the planning commissioner will directly do. Cause you're not, you know, running the water system, for example, but, um, there, there are land use concerns sometimes, especially if you're using, if your municipal system relies on municipal wells, there's usually a wellhead protection area. So we need to be concerned about what kind of industry are locating potentially within or near where your wells are because you obviously don't want to concern yourself with polluting your own groundwater source. So there are, there's stuff like that that would come into play.
Okay.
Well, we've talked about the groundwater. I mean, I think quality of streets is one we could definitely work on somewhere really nice. I mean, I live up on beach where Mrs. Napreelski and I are right across from each other and like, there's a stretch there that is more patch than road, I think. So definitely some of our roads could probably be looked at, uh, at least be resurfaced. And my kids like the roller blade and they were like, Dad, I'm not going down that way. They always go the other way because they just can't get, get up and down that hill with their skateboards and their roller blades. Because it's so bad. So I think it'd be nice to address that. One I was surprised on there was traffic congestion. Yeah. I really looked at like the top five, six concerns. I was like, I tried to drive Grand Rapids at seven in the morning. Yeah. I, I don't feel like that was an issue. Maybe again, a perception thing at certain hours where it might be busy. I know I've had to wait like three or four light cycles to hang a left to head south on the bridge, but that's the only congestion I think I've ever run into here.
One of the things I think is a big, um, thing for the people here, that at a council meeting, if you had somebody from the road commission to discuss where Aldi and Meyer is, if you were able to get somebody from the road commission to come in and explain how it works, how they're doing their tests and all this, because that is a big one too. And you see that online all the time. And yes, we do need to do something, but we understand that is the road commission. That's not.
It's not our property.
Right.
It's property.
But to make the citizens feel like something's being done and to know what's going on, to have somebody come in from the road commission and say, okay, so I know y'all are concerned. Here's what's going on. We are looking into it, right?
I think we had that discussion when we had our joint meeting with Zola, right? And I think the answer there unfortunately is we just need more car accidents and then they'll finally fix it, unfortunately.
It's in M dot's hands, wasn't it?
It was.
Is what they had said.
There's nothing that we can do.
I mean, part of this is, this is M dot. Yep. Road commission's job is to make sure that the roads look nice. M dots is flow and signage, right? And so that's, it's on them. My understanding of that meeting was you have to have a reason for it and the reason's got to be accidents. I mean, we had a bad one like within what thirty days of Aldi opening. I remember the road was like shut down for a little bit there as they cleaned that one up, but I don't, I don't know what else. I know when I go to Aldi trying to hang a left is a nightmare. Trying to head back over the bridge. I usually hang a right, go into Meyer and turn back around to get back up. So I don't know if you need a Michigan turn there or what's going to happen, but yeah, it'd be nice to get an answer there. But again, like, I don't know if we have this, that's not beyond our, yeah, our control, right?
Like I said, just because the citizens would like to just probably hear from somebody, even if it's just.
Here's the M dot website.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if there's a way to them to file a complaint. I don't know, but. Their concerns, I can imagine there is that to me would be helping empower our citizens to come up with that solution when it's out of our control, right?
Here's the planning issue that, um, could relate to traffic congestion, the, our lack of east-west routes, um, the Cherry Street extension. Is that, that's the kind of thing that we, that, that we should be planning for so that we can reduce traffic congestion as we, you want.
Some other, I think, takeaways that I noticed in here like on, um, what was it? There, so there were, I mean, so some of them I think are typical, but again, difficult for, for us as planners to specifically address. So when we ask, um, what type of, of, of businesses people would like to see, I mean, we asked this because I think it, it's valuable to ask them to kind of gauge where the, where, where the desires are. Um, a lot of people often want sit-down restaurants. They want general retail. I mean, that stuff that's going to be dictated by the marketplace. Our job as planners is to make sure that that type of, of development is enabled in sufficient, you know, areas to make sure that it's, that, that it's all viable. Um, there was a question in here somewhere that, uh, indicated there was a fair amount of support or, um, you know, job creators, industrial development in some parts of the city. Um, so something like that, we could look at, um, you know, writing policy that talks about maybe a more proactively marketing available properties for industrial development. We have some of our clients who are looking to actively push that kind of a thing. Um.
Citizens even know what we've done recently in trying to promote selling our industrial property?
We can mention it, that that's a priority and, and we all know that the city's done a lot of stuff in that direction. We're waiting for it to sell. So.
Two years, we've had two offers that fell through. Um, I just sent out an RFP the beginning of September. Um, I sent it to at least twenty developers. The right place sent the same RFP to about twenty developers. I had initial response, you know, interesting. Thank you for letting me know. You know, I plan to submit something. The deadline was November first. I didn't receive anything. So I've already had a follow-up, um, Zoom meeting with the right place and Fishback, our engineers who helped us put the RFP together. Um, we're, we're probably going to list it again with a different, um, ability company that specializes in industrial property. Um, but we, since then, we have shown it to two other companies. We are number one on one of the company's lists. They're going to make a decision shortly after the first of the year. So there is some, and, and this is the West Street property only. So there is interest.
I'm curious, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. A curiosity, since we're talking about the West Street property, um, we begin looking forward, assuming all that stuff sells, assuming that we continue to build out an industrial base over there. Um, I have heard we've, um, a couple of managers ago, it was a big goal of his to, um, extend West Street out to Sixteen Mile. Is that still a potential thing that we should be looking at um, on our master plan, uh, in order to route that traffic that theoretically can come from that industrial zone? So it doesn't go right through the middle of town. And also to give us more area to build on.
Yeah, the city owns an easement all the way to Sixteen Mile.
Okay, that would be nice.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but in, in this is the place for these big brandy house, way out their plans.
Twenty or thirty year plan. It's not something that then everything's going to happen tomorrow or in twenty twenty-five, but in, you know, twenty thirty-five or twenty forty, we might, you know, we should see a bunch of these things checked off. And if you're not in the plan, they're going to be a lot harder to get done. I mean, it's, it's helpful, I think, when, when the city council or city management is making decisions about what to do and how to pursue things when can point to something like this that's founded on public process and public input and adopted by the planning commission and the city, in, in, in the city council to say, this is what we want to do. So we are going to do it now. Um, so there was we see, um, comments in these survey results that seem to be a little contradictory with one another. So for example, we have some comments in here about, um, protecting private property rights along with comments about zoning enforcement. Those concepts at times can be at odds. So I don't know if, if you guys feel there is a desire for, um, stronger enforcement or maybe not. I, I know you have a zoning enforcement officer here who, you know, does that, but I'm, I guess I'm curious of what, what your perceptions are with respect to code enforcement, zoning enforcement.
Complaints from both sides. It tells me a lot.
Why was your new location where people lived? You know, I could see like some are, I hear some locations over here, like where that house was burnt down. Obviously that's gone now. You know, some of those things are temporary and I don't know if, again, sometimes perception is their own reality. And I'm looking at this, but we, we definitely have houses that have junk cars and not upkeep that I think need to be taken care of. But I mean, that's, that's a hard one, right? I mean, how do you? I mean, you can give somebody a ticket as much as you want, but I don't think it's up to the city to pay to have that removed up to that person. Right? So I mean, that's a rock and a hard place for us, right?
Aggressive you want to be. So, you know, there are communities that will, if they have, you know, junk cars or some other zoning violation, like you can write them tickets if they don't deal with it, you can take them to court. You can get compliance orders and force them to take care of the problem. You know, that just with a threat of more fines, but with the, you know, threat of a judge saying you shall do this or have bigger problems than a fifty dollar fine from the city of Cedar Springs. Um, so there, there are ways that the city can, can effectuate those things, but anyway, and part of the question for the city is then how aggressive do you want to be? There are some communities who proactively drive around and look for violations and send letters and or aggressively, there are many other communities who run on a complaint, on a complaint based system where they don't really go looking for violations except for maybe if there's a really, really, really obvious and bad one, they might do something, but otherwise it's waiting for a complaint to come in. And then they will go and deal with it appropriately. And if no one's complaining, then no one at City Hall is going to do anything.
Aren't we already at the drive around and look stage? So I mean.
I kind of wonder, I mean, our poverty level compared to the rest of the county is higher. You know, I was looking at Census Bureau and I just wonder if a lot of it has to do with just income disparity. And the, the inability to take care of some of those items because of that income disparity. And I don't know if that's, if the places that are, have violations, especially when it comes to upkeep. I don't know if those are owned by the person living there, if those are rentals and we need to have a conversation with landlords keeping up. I don't know the answer to that, but it just makes me wonder, you know, where are some of these issues coming up without actually looking at every single house going, all right, here's our pocket of gross in town where we need to really have a push, right? And I understand that people like to tinker. There's a guy just down the road from my stuff. He's got his Jeep that he's always working on. Um, and he's always got trucks in his yard. I'm glad he's got a hobby, but I really wish his yard didn't have trucks on it all, all over the place. I would not want to be his neighbor. But, you know, there's places like that where I wonder, you know, how can we help those people empower them to do the upkeep and keeping the net code that we want for the city and keep our, the values growing and enticing people to move into our community. When I moved here four years ago, I didn't know I was going to expect. I love Cedar Springs. No. Good town.
Prior, prior twelve, prior to twelve months ago, um, finance director, my, my observation was we were spending close to twenty thousand dollars for two to three consecutive years in enforcing zoning issues through court enforcement. Twenty thousand dollars. I mean, you've got attorney fees, you've got court costs. I, when I became manager, I said, we, we need to find another resolution. It is a magistrate. Do we need the attorneys when we appear before the magistrate? Can we find other solutions on helping? I, I just think twenty thousand dollars in attorney fees was way too much. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
Where you can have people have throwaway days. I know like my mom lives in Cannon Township and they do a big thing at the fire where you can throw basically anything you want. I mean, even to bring your corrosive liquids and they'll take all that stuff. Where you can throw basically anything you want. I mean, even to bring your corrosive liquids and they'll take all that stuff. And it helps clean up the area. I don't know if that's something that we could do here where you just have a spot that's a weekend or two or a week and you go like, hey. Here's the time to get rid of your junk. Yep. So.
They do that in the spring and in the fall. It's like a Friday and a Saturday. And you can throw away almost anything except for tires. And like paint and stuff. And they even did like a TV recycling thing last time and added a couple of things. So if you don't want to throw away your. Old tube TV that weighs seven thousand pounds, you can, you know, drag it into this place, recycle it for you.
Will take paint as long as it's been dried out. So if you people just open a can and leave it until it's dried, so. I mean, maybe that's a solution to some of these issues.
That's actually good.
And I will freely admit, one of my personal gripes is the sidewalk. I mean, I walk here almost every time I have a meeting in that. Beach Street one. I mean, it looks like an archaeological ruin. I'm not gonna lie. And there's not a whole lot left of the sidewalk in certain sections. And in some sections, it's totally gone. But I understand that that's a east west street and we prioritize the north south to get kids to school, but it'd be nice if at some point we could. Maybe fix those up. I know that would walkability with one of those. Yeah.
It there's a bit of history that you you go through when you're, and I don't know why I looked at Rose, uh, but uh. Wow, I can only speak for twenty years ago. I'm guessing you might. And this place has changed a lot in twenty years, and I'm sure even more than that, if you have a longer perspective. A lot of this is going to be growing pains. This is. Not the city with not the same makeup it was even twenty years ago when I got here. And I'm a transplant, so it's, I mean, there to a lot of people in town, I'm a damn new guy. So I'm there's there's. To be expected, there's gonna be different concepts about what the city should be and what the nature of the city should be. Um, that's gonna be very difficult for us to legislate, or we can, we we know where it's going. And we can have a goal, but it's gonna take a while. Before. The city just overturns.
Do you think there's a need for additional? Sidewalks, additional trails, additional non-motorized. I mean, that was something that I think people liked, but I didn't get the sense in the survey that it was like. Pretty, I mean, you have obviously. So it's a huge asset. Well, I think it seemed to be something that like. The sense that I got is people said, yep, we have that and it's great. So it's not a big deal because we already have, you know, we can check that box. Here's what you guys think.
I mean, to Matt's point here earlier, I mean, it the trail's great, but if you have to go four wheeling to get to it. Um. Or we have the the central. Stuff now that we didn't have, but not everyone can easily get to it, and it's been getting better all the time. There's. All kinds of new sidewalk out my direction now that didn't used to be there.
Well, I mean, they could just be like what Grand Rapids has done down there with taking their existing road structure and just making it more bike friendly. I mean, obviously with the White Pine Trail, our citizens getting there, making it bike friendly for them to get there, but also people that are. Biking up on there. I've ridden my bike from here to Rockford several times, went to the corner bar and then rode back. I'm hoping people from Rockford are doing the same thing, riding up here, going to the brewery and riding back. Right? So if we can make sure our city is maybe more like that. That might be helpful, too, and that's just paint. Once the roads are fixed, of course. In defense of our roads, we do have some nice roads in certain areas. I'm describing about the one by my house, so.
I have a property on a rubbleized road.
One comment I saw was the taxes at point four two. Now, we know. That that's not correct, but that's the bill you got. Is there any way we can publish like on our website, the actual mileage that goes to our city? So when people get their tax bill, they can tell the difference between what belongs to our city and what belongs to. Everybody else in Kent County. If it could just be set up real simple.
That's right on the bill, you know, Kent County.
I know, I know. But apparently, according to the survey, there's some people that don't understand that. And I've heard that often enough.
Taxes here definitely higher than other places I've lived, and the water bill was definitely higher. That was the two shocks I had when I moved here was. I wasn't expecting cedar to be more expensive. And it definitely was on those two ends. Yeah, my water bill doubled when I moved to Cedar Springs from Comstock Park area.
The water bill thing, is that just an economy of scale? I mean, we have, it it costs a certain amount of money to run a water treatment facility, whether you're a small city or a larger city. And so we're kind of at the lower end of a city that has the water treatment facility that we have. It the population that we have to divide it up amongst is small.
Yeah.
Um, as we grow, it should kind of even out one, we guess.
We're having this discussion. We talked about the apartment complex going in about how hopefully that would help even that out a little bit, maybe even. Lower the water bills because we'd have more people paying there, but.
That's something, too, I think that sort of. You know, that's why. Master plans, you know, us and others will advocate for. You know, more density or more compact and efficient forms of development, because you can get. You know, two hundred users on a water system with. Pipe versus five thousand feet of pipe. You know, one is gonna be way cheaper for for the entire system and for those users in the long run than the other one is. But to the extent that the plan can can talk about some of that and say, hey, you know, you're. Everything is going to be less expensive if we have a sort of a traditional grid pattern with with density. In terms of water and I mean, that helps water, helps with sewer, it helps with street costs, sidewalks, I mean, everything. And the more lane, you know, the more miles of street you build, the more miles of pipe that's in the ground. All expensive, and if you can get. A hundred users on that same frontage that you would otherwise only get thirty, then that's a good thing in terms of your water bill and. Your snow plowing is more efficient that way, and your stormwater system is could be aimed more efficiently that way because there's just less lineal feat. Deal with.
Well, that's a good point. I mean, if we're looking out long term. Do we have an archaic system zoning wise and organs wise regarding? Um, population density. Relative to where other communities are moving. But are there changes that we need to look at to encourage population density? Or is that the third rail in a community like this and the pop in? The people who already own their houses around here are going to scream bloody murder if we do that.
There are some very interesting, um, so when we did Rockford's plan, for example, we put together a graph that showed the. The state equalized value, I think. Either the state equalized value or the the taxable value per acre. And so in in so we did that an analysis across every property in in the city to see whi- which ones were, you know, generating the most tax revenue per acre for the city and. Um, unsurprisingly, the downtown was. It's more productive economically than any of the outlying areas, but was a little more surprising to me was that even the industrial areas didn't generate that much tax revenue, even compared to the residential ones. It'll as long as there was some some density there, because even an industrial property that's worth, you know, a million dollars. Some of them take up fifteen acres versus the same, you know, amount of land that's taken up by thirty houses might end up being worth more than that. Um, certainly, the the residential properties, you know, tend to need and utilize more city services, so it's not. Really that huge of a disparity. Um. But it was it was an interesting challenge to the idea that everyone says, oh, well, want to have more. More tax revenue, we need to encourage more industrial development. I don't think that's something that we can just automatically assume. Nowadays, and we 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 can run the same kind of analysis here, and I'll be interested to see what it what it looks like, but I'd be willing to bet that. You're that the downtown and some of the residential areas. Very near the downtown are probably financially some of your most productive. Property in terms of how much tax revenue they generate to the city. We can look at that. And and I think it's 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 an interesting conversation because, too, normally is 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 we all know cities have a a dense kind of downtown core, and then the density. Drops off as you get farther from the center of the city. And so, yeah, I think when we're looking at future development, especially in in the four twenty five areas, maybe one of those discussions is should we? Instead of sort of having a low density pattern out there, should we be looking at at a higher density pattern of development, whether that's residential, maybe we look at. Different ways to get compact, commercial or mixed use development out there that makes better use of the land. And a more efficient and more productive use of the land.
One of the things that we have here in Cedar, I think about this often, is we've got these schools. And they consume an enormous amount of water. You know, more so during the school season, but. Pro- just providing water for those schools is is just horribly expensive, and we don't get any property tax off of them. So that's probably one of the things we're looking at, why us as citizens and taxpayers have to pay so much. But there it it just think about the hundreds of kids up there taking showers and all the cooking that's going on. It's it's mind boggling.
From a sheer dollars and cents point of view, I mean, there's a motivation. For the city to want to increase its size and get more people hooked on. And. Of course, we're landlocked, other than whatever we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Encourage into the city through other means. Um. The question from our side is. That what we want to put out to as our as our goal, uh, for the for the community? That. Something we should be striving towards or business as usual? What's where's everyone on that?
I think we can just continue to do the best we can and provide. The the most important things for our city is water, sewer. Roads and do the best we can with what we have. And um. You know, what what else can we do? We can't make everybody happy. That's obvious. But we can plan on. Plan on doing the right thing. That's the right thing for our city and our school system, which is huge. That's like over the population of our entire city, isn't it? On a daily basis. Three thousand, maybe ki- employees and kids. Got to be getting close. Have to look it up. But what can we do? You know, we've got that huge school system to support. And that involves how many? Townships?
From the four, for sure.
At least four.
Let me bring up a little bit of history and use another community as an example. Um, when I was in the area, I didn't live here, but when I was in the area. Oh, in the early nineties, so a little while ago. Um, Rockford had a reputation at the time that they were anti-business, anti-development. They were trying to keep. Squire Street. So to speak. And not allow franchises and all that stuff into there. They've since relaxed that, obviously, in the ensuing years. Um, that was a decision that was made by them at the time, I'm assuming as part of planning, assuming as part of a master plan. That that was their definition of what they wanted to do as Grand Rapids came towards them. Well, thirty years ago, Grand Rapids has moved about from Rockford to us. So the question is, what's our mentality? What do we want to do regarding the future of Cedar Springs? Do we have? A growth mentality? Do we have a keep things, you know, keep things the way they are mentality? What where are we? As a whole, that's these are some of the big things I think we need to answer first. Before we can get into the weeds of we should do this, we should promote that, we should we should save the, you know, all these other things.
I I don't see where we have any. Any reason that we can't continue to grow other than we're pretty much landlocked. And um, our utilities can only go so far without. Huge cost in the millions and millions of dollars. Nobody's gonna like that either.
Directions can we grow as far as like, one of the big things I know is the sewer system. Like, it gets really expensive to go certain directions, because you gotta just elevation is what it is. What directions do we have? That are open for growth that have been identified by the city that.
You have your, I put a map by everybody's place there tonight. I think that's the northern end of the community. But we're maxed out once um, twenty twenty five is done, all those hundred and eight homes will be. Constructed and occupied. There's no more land up there unless we go outside of our jurisdiction into Solon Township. Um, there is forty acres to the east of. Cedar Springs Mobile Estates. Um. They've they've talked real preliminary, you know, well, is the city willing to allow more development there? Absolutely. But it it has to be. The right fit. Has to be managed appropriately. Um.
Isn't that why we changed it to single family so it wouldn't turn into a uh? Yeah.
Multi-family or, yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Just south of that. That's all wet, right? And in our opinion, it's undevelopable. Other than that, we've got the industrial property on the southwest corner. Township.
And basically. We're restricted to anything, uh, basically to the this side of one thirty one for our four twenty five with Solon Township. So if we were to go north, for instance, if someone wanted to build north in Solon Township. Um, beyond where they're building the houses right now. That could be four twenty five then?
Be, but the the issue there, and I'm not saying it's it's a. The sewer, the sewers at Cherry Street. Going eighty acres to the north. This is all high. So. You'd have to put your sewer in, you know, so so low, so deep in order to be gravity fed into this.
And that's the these are some of the the like big issues. It's easy to take a map like this and say, we go this way, this way, this way, but we had political issues with Solon. We have physics with 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 sewers. Um. I don't mean it is all trapped here, but that's these are the kind of like big picture things I've been thinking about for the last few years.
I think the apartment complex will definitely help the city. That's hundred and sixty eight units and. That size of their. Now, just just to get the water from our tower going west on Solon Street. Wrapping around to White Creek, that's that's just over a million dollars. That the city doesn't have in our coffers, so the developers fronting that for us. So the increased taxes, we're gonna have twenty five percent pass through coming to our general fund. Seventy five percent goes back to the developers for up to thirteen years until we pay them back over a million dollars. To put that infrastructure in for us. What's the alternative? We can go bond for over a million dollars. Where where do you pay bond money? Where do you pay the bonds back? You increase the utility rates. Yeah.
And a- again. I'm feeling like it's the time to determine what the nature of our community is going to be. Ten years from now is now, not after ten years have elapsed that we already made the de facto decisions along the way. So if there were big picture things that we wanted to look towards, I wanted to get people thinking about that.
Well, I. I think it's one of our priorities is our utilities and of course that affects the school because without those utilities, a lot of kids wouldn't have school. No, it's just very important probably to all of us who have kids in the school and raise kids for the school and uh. That helps our economy, it brings people in and out of town. And stopping in um post office, bank. It's just so important, the economy that that school brings to us, so. We just gotta keep keep trucking and keep things rolling.
We've been at this for a while, um what what else can we give to you tonight to help you along in your process?
This is this discussion has been good for me. Um so what we will do over the next month is we'll start to sort of piece together some some ideas and some. Gold based on this conversation and other stuff that's in the um. In the survey. Following, so we'll we we can bring that to you for for the next meeting, following that, we'll also be looking at a at a at a land use plan. So we'll have a future land use map with various designations on it, and that's where we can look at some of these. Big and properties, maybe what we can do is sort of identify some of the some of your key priorities or, you know, key areas where maybe we. Want to encourage development and figure out how to make it happen. Whether it's that that big piece that's just to the east of the of the Mobile Home Park or some other property closer to the city, I don't know. But I think that's all, th- those are all conversations that 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 we can have kind of as as we work through that project process and then we can also talk about. You know, what the how it should be designed, what kind of? Homes should be in there if it if it's a residential project and we single family or multi-family or two-family or mixed, you know. Whatever, so we'll so we can start down that road too, so we'll we'll put together a draft. Uh set of goals for the next meeting to review with you and then we can work together to kind of add some additional detail as we move through the process. So we still have a few meetings left. Um kind of having these types of conversations before we get to a point where we have a draft done, but you'll have kind of some more. More meat, I guess, for the next conversation to kind of help move things along. Helpful for me, so I appreciate it.
Is every five years? That's mandatory?
Every five years, you don't have to actually change anything. Um so depending on how things go, you might want to look at this in twenty thirty. Uh you might look at it in twenty thirty and go, yeah, this is still fine and we're comfortable with it till twenty thirty-five, so that that part is up to you.
The next two items on the agenda. Uh we are, excuse me, I I are related, obviously, the short-term rentals, the general law and the zoning amendment. Is there any reason why we can't discuss those simultaneously? And just, I mean, we can vote on them separately if we need to, but it's the same issue, obviously.
The zoning ordinance identifies where we're gonna allow short-term rentals. In the draft ordinance, we have um our two single-family and two two-family residential district. Central Business District. For other areas that we want them, don't want them.
I looked at the mixed use and I thought that that would be also a perfect location for um. The short terms and. To MML, I don't know if you've ever done that and I look for like sample ordinances and stuff, I couldn't find a thing. So I went, I just Google it and I got um and they said Holland had one of the best. Um short-term rental ordinances that were seeming to be like. Real good, so I looked through that as much as I could. Of course, they have a lot more zones than we do. And they have, one thing I didn't quite understand was they had um owner. Um short-term investment. Homes and then in investment homes, which I was assuming that was just homes that people own for rental.
So with that, probably, so they do this in South Haven too, they have something they call short-term rental business units and short-term rental personal units. I'm not a hundred percent on this, I think what the distinction is is if it's just an individual that owns. A home and they want to short-term rent it in the summer, that's a short-term rental personal unit. But in some of those communities with a lot of tourists, there are companies that just go and buy penthouses. And all they do is is short-term rent them as a business, and I think those require a different type of license. Think that's the distinction or something to that effect, I mean, I could be mischaracterizing that a a little bit, but I think that's kind of the concept is that they want to treat. Um you know, the the big business short-term rental operations a little bit differently than it would be if it's just. You know, your neighbor Joe goes away for the summer or something and he wants to short-term rent his house for a few months or something. But in a lot of those communities, there are just permanent year-round twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five short-term rental. Properties, um and that's something that's that's been going on there for 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 quite a long time. I don't I don't know that we need to get into that level of 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 detail here because we don't have that many of them at this point, we have 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 a a couple, but. Um as we see more of them popping, something to consider if if it turns into a industry that. That 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 grows a lot here for sure.
Would it be a problem to not allow short-term rentals in our R one district?
No, it would not be a problem. I mean, this, I don't think, so there are some communities that just ban them entirely. Those are a commercial use of property, we're not going to allow them in any of our residential zones, period, end of conversation. Um so, yeah, you can you can ban them in any district that you want. Um our initial draft, I think, included them. Potentially in R one, and I think there's at least one property in R one that that was off that had a short-term rental listed.
I think we banned them from R one and allowed them in R two, maybe I'm wrong on that.
Remember what what district it was in, I mean, most of the city is zoned R one.
The R two will allow apartment homes that are converted into apartments.
What we looked at, Ms. Rose, was starting in the B two. And allowing just like five maybe and just. Allowing, starting in the B two and just allowing a few and seeing how it goes. And then, once it, once we figure out. What's going on, how it's going, then we can expand. But for the time being, we would just stick to the B two area, which would be the more um busy area. And where things are going on and then we would expand from there.
How would you feel about allowing it in the mixed use? Since it's right close to downtown. Where businesses are legally allowed in the house.
Just allowing it in the B two. Cause just trying to get our feet wet.
Right now, the ordinance in front of us does B two and R two. So somewhere along the way, the R two got added.
I think the R two is added because there was, I I remember looking at a property that was offered, it was listed on Airbnb or something. I think it was adjacent to the trail and that was kind of how they were marketing the property, um but I think there was. One, the other couple that were listed in the city, I think both of those were in the downtown. To something where. It's it's it is, it's completely up to you. I mean, if you want to allow them in every district or no districts or anywhere in between. It's fine, it's really just kind of whatever you feel is most appropriate and the. The draft limits the number of licenses that would be granted anyways to like, what was it, five or something? So the intent there is to. And to see how it goes, but. To run the risk, even if it's a small risk of sort of being overrun by them when you're not ready for it.
I think we have five licenses max, I'm fine with it being in R one and R two, mixed use, B two, B three. Yeah, reason like we wouldn't need to. What's your concern there?
Well, just trying to contain it to one area. Well, okay, so in the B two area, you have the apartments over the businesses that can be rented out. If we start with it and figure out how this is going, how it's working. Then we can move on and expand it, but the thing is, if we start throwing them in the R one, R two and all that. People may have a lot of backlash because, you know, there's a lot of horror stories out there about. The short-term rentals and then they don't want to have their neighbor and then we start having a lot of problems.
And this is. Don't we have ordinances already in place to prevent those problems though?
But this is just, this is just getting our feet wet and so.
I I have no problem with being in the residential areas, to me, that's where they're gonna be anyways. If you have a house that you're renting, when I've gone to a small town and rented in a VRBO, I'm doing it because I want to go to a small town. I don't want to be on the main drag. Sorry, I'll give you two, be just so as you can walk anywhere in our town and be downtown within five minutes from any, almost any house here. That's why I have no problem with it being in those R one, R twos.
If we're looking at a hard five limit to help with some of your concerns here. We're now spreading it over a very large area. So it makes it very unlikely that you get a cluster that's going to bother somebody. Because if we have R one, R two, B two, and we have five through the entire city, they're all isolated.
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying, okay. Yeah, that that makes sense.
The the only problem I can see about put putting it like in the traditional neighborhood, R ones is parking. You know, most of these are homes, have room for a couple of cars, so if you you do rent it out as a short term. You got a couple more cars to deal with. But, you know, like any other rental, which we had to work very hard on rentals because. These houses were broke down into three, four apartments, but there was no parking. And no, you know, everybody's parked in the lawns and in the streets and that's one problem. If you get them closer to downtown, there's more parking, because we got a lot more public parking, so that would be my only concern.
The second street can be a problem.
Well, uh it could be except that there's one, two, three, four public parking lots for, you know, folks to get into.
Whereas if they're in some of the farther out residential area, those are places that are more likely to have garages, driveways.
It could get crowded if you, you know, had had. More rentals in that that. A group comes in and has two, three cars, it's could be an issue. And the traditional neighborhood folks may not like that. But. They have to deal with a lot of rental issues as it is. With the.
Down and rent rented.
But anyway, I think we've got room for them somewhere, somehow.
I think in the residential areas that we're talking about, those have driveways and like you said, garages, I'm not concerned with. But people already park on the street, you know, that live here. Um I'm not overly concerned with that, I mean, if again, that goes down to enforcement, if it's a code violation. We just gotta make sure that the owner of that rental knows that they're in violation. If they're a good VRBO person, they're gonna have that book that has the rules. All the good ones I've been to always have how they use the house and one of the rules is how to park generally in there. Well, if they do it right, it's not required, you know, I was just down in New Orleans, believe me, I had no clue where to park my car when I was at that one. Had to message him.
Didn't ask anybody to go.
It was a funeral, was not that exciting, oh, sorry.
Beatles in New Orleans are exciting. Okay. In front of us right now, we have the, it says R two and B two. Well, the guess, the first question is, are we changing that or not? And then, if we do, do we support it or not?
I'd like to add R one and MU in there. But I'm just one voice, so.
I would prefer to exclude R one, but MU would be, I think, a. A good plan.
I think I'm with Rose on the R one, just because, um you know, even though you have all those new houses being built back there, let's say. Somebody wants to go and pick up a couple of those licenses and buy houses back in there too specifically, you just wrote it, you know. Rent out for for um the Airbnb stuff and it's, it becomes a long-term thing, not. A just a summer thing or just this or just that, then you're losing all that additional housing that we're hoping to be bringing those families in for. So we we do have a housing problem, you know, yeah, we have that. Um thing going in, but I guess that's kind of where I'm at with the the R one. Is my concern is those those new ones coming in.
I would hope that five licenses would not affect our housing issues, that seems small to me.
But I've seen like cities like um Nashville and um Holland is one of them. Um where people just came in, bought up specifically just to run it as a business.
Yeah, and there's definitely places, I mean, like I said, the one I stayed in New Orleans, it was definitely run by a business that did them throughout the city. When I've been to St. Louis to visit family, I was to get a BRB on, the one I always go to now is run by a business because I like it. But they're all in residential areas. And that's one of the cleaner houses on the street, if anything, they're keeping the upkeep and. I would say, dare say, the value of that property probably has boosted the value of the properties around it. I'm just going from personal experience here. So the place is that, because I don't use hotels anymore, because they're just, I have to rent two rooms and for the price of, you know, a little over a room, I can get a whole house. It makes more sense to me and I've always had had those in nice residential areas, but not an issue.
So do can we find a compromise or are we going to just have to vote up or down? Uh consensus here. This the down here, it's mixed use B two, am I character- characterizing that properly and the R two?
Yeah, and there's plenty of houses and neighborhoods in those areas too, it's not like they're deserts. But there's more parking in those areas too, it's always been a concern in the R one.
That enough? Down here or?
I would like to see R one, I don't think it's gonna make a difference to do R two, R one, I think it needs to be in there, you have bigger spaces. If you want them more spread out and we're worried about consolidation of parties or something like that, R one's gonna do that.
I understood what you said and I could see them spread out throughout the city versus.
I wasn't advocating one way or the other.
I know, I know, and that's that's how it.
Because honestly, I don't care, the one way or the other, this is over five. If as long as we're keeping it to five, I don't care. But I wanna I wanna get the best consensus we can.
Did our uh Mr. Rosinsky, did he have any opinions on this in his?
Thing in terms of the districts, he was supportive of them in general. Um do not see significant opposition, most people seem to be more worried about upkeep or maintenance. Uh two homeless buildings, businesses in the city, short-term air rentals are pretty much self-coverance through all their network. Rentals at all. Of the concept, but did not provide any specific feedback concerning the districts themselves.
I must would like to table that, do we have him in this room? I think another opinion would be helpful. I must would like to table that. Do we have him in this room? I think another opinion would be helpful. I would like to hear what he has to say about that too.
Jim Merrillington too.
Yeah, I agree.
Is that where, so we're gonna, I hate to keep putting it, pushing back, but I do feel like
we're kind of have this, I think a couple more opinions might help us maybe some more perspective too.
So it is a consensus then, just we know where we're at. So we're not picking this up on whole clock again next time and starting the same arguments over again. Do we have a consensus that we're generally in favor of a limited ability to have short-term rentals in the city?
Yes.
Okay, so that's been decided. Now we're just gonna talk, we just have to decide inclusively where. So with that, should, is there any point in us, uh, addressing the law part? Or is there anything we need to look at? Because we're looking at the zoning first.
I don't think so.
I didn't see anything in the law part when I read it, that jumped out at me, but, but we, obviously, we're gonna have to look at it again when we do all this. We should vote on it all together as a package.
I think where we were gonna allow them was the biggest issue.
Right.
Well, in that case, um, if you've got everything you need from us on this that we can give you, then we'll move on to item D, uh, the motion to establish the regular meeting dates. Excuse me.
So we needed to table there. And side on that.
Oh, um, how do we table it last time? We table it till next meeting?
I believe that's how we did it in the past. We, one of us made a, I'll make a motion to table until our next meeting so we have more input.
I will support that.
Discussion before we table it. All in favor of tabling this in the next meeting? You signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? Okay. Now, item D.
Just make it sure.
Thank you, thank you. I, I, I It wasn't, um, a motion that we I mean, that we read out, but I guess, yeah.
Right.
We're discussing it.
We have to table it.
Okay, so, um, there is a motion in here. I have to find it, uh, for setting our dates. It looks like it's page two eighty-eight. So we have to decide where our schedule for next year is going to be? And it looks like, uh, assuming Rebecca did this, but whomever, um, is, is are certain dates that are, uh, might have some issues with them. So we should just make sure that we're all aware of that before we decide on if we're adopting this or changing it.
Problem for myself.
I looked it up today and spring break changed from those, for those of us who have kids who are used to spring break starting for Cedar in the last week of March. It's changed this year, so it doesn't, it allows us to get in an April first
Right.
meeting if we choose to before spring break. Unless, or it should be moved, but if we're gonna move it, we'd have to move it way out to the middle of April. If, if that were the case, so. Other issues?
Okay, we have a concern with the November eleventh. It says close to the public on November eleventh, Veterans Day.
Well, yeah.
And another week is, I don't know.
Would that be on a Tuesday then?
I mean, just because city halls closed to the public doesn't mean we can't use it. That's, that's, that's all it means.
Yeah, we're working that off on the holidays, so. Alright. We'll make her work on the holiday. Doesn't matter.
Alright. Any more discussion? Or will, or I'll just call for it? All in favor of the calendar? You signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so that's, that's our calendar.
Yes, so well, so this is a, this is, this is a resolution, so there should be a motion to adopt resolution twenty oh, two oh two four dash oh one, a resolution to establish the meeting dates on page two eighty-eight of your packet. And you should probably
Okay. So who wants to make that motion?
I propose that we make a motion to accept the dates of the meetings for the calendar next year. That work?
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one?
Yes.
Well, support.
Roll call. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Naproski?
Yes.
That's more pressure. Uh, Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Yes, and I will, yeah, therefore
There we go.
Five, five to zero, the motion happens.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
In, uh, correspondence. First, we have the twenty-four, twenty-four calendar that's always in there. Unless there's anything we need to discuss on that, I'll move on. Uh, is there anything we need to know about upcoming projects?
Working with a couple current businesses, um, Space Cadet. All that is out there, the HC district. Talking about changing up one of their licensing. Jade Farms, that's at, I think, one, three, two, five, oh, White Creek, um, has sold recently. I talked with the new owner. Um, they plan to apply for a grow license there. I told them licenses do not transfer. Emailed them today, all the applications that they need to fill out for us. They're currently working through state pre-approval. Um, worked a lot with, uh, I'm sure Woman Center. They're gonna buy forty-five Pine Street, their board approved for them to buy that lot acre and a half and build a facility there.
Up behind Wesco?
Yes.
Okay.
I told her the dates for the December planning commission meeting and the January told her everything that she needs to submit to me at least a month ahead of time. So the city planner can review it and if everything's in the packet, then we'll bring it to planning commission. About all I can think of off the top of my head.
Sounds good.
And then, I'm sorry, so that's a question on that. Have we heard anything about Vanderhide and the property next to it?
Yes, that's another one. Um, so they, they called us and asked about, um, maybe by now they've purchased that home that they needed to buy to tear down. Wanted to know if our fire department wanted to do a
Controlled burn.
Burn the house down, controlled burn kind of thing. So the fire department is working through that. Um, the person that was doing all the planning commission, the paperwork for that has now left. So somebody else is trying to pick it up and learn the process.
Okay.
So if you have questions, I'm available, but I'm kind of letting them do their thing. They know what needs to happen before it comes back to us, so.
Thank you.
Okay, then, um, the stolen township master plan notice, I'm assuming that's just notifying us again that they're working on their master plan.
Changes.
Hey, um, staff comments, city manager.
Um, I, I just feel like there's a lot going on, um. Kind of excited to work through this master plan stuff and get some goals identified. So staff and I know kind of what to prioritize in future budgets.
Um, as far as city clerk, I don't know if you have anything you would like to add on your behalf?
Okay.
Um, planning commission members? Any comments?
Thank everybody for being here. That's all about, all I have to say, the, the, um, Spooktacular was fabulous. How many kids you think were down here? Fifteen hundred? Yeah, it was just jam. But it was fun. It was a nice night. It wasn't snowing. So, yeah, I think it was a wonderful, uh, event. And then there's the twenty-third, I believe, is the, uh, event at Heritage Park. In a dedication kind of, uh, respect for, out for Jerry Hall, celebration of lights. So if anybody could be there, we can be there. I think it'd be a one, wonderful, wonderful, uh, way to respect Jerry Hall and all the wonderful things he did for, has done for our city.
The other comments? Thank you all for coming out tonight, giving us a quorum, working thus through all this and putting your, um, your big thoughts on kind of work on the master plan. Um, city council representative, we don't have one of those anymore, do we?
No.
Stay, I'm still, still it.
You want to add as a city council representative?
I really enjoyed it. It was ten years of, uh, uh, working with some wonderful people and making a lot of friends. It was a, a great honor. And that's it.
Uh, planning consultant report, anything to add?
Being in a couple of weeks.
Is that? We're adjourned.